Can you hear me now? Thank you.
And then I'm probably, sorry to say that, Mayor, and then, once you do that, please mute yourself if you're not talking, just for the, avoid the feedback.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I'm gonna start. So it is now 6:33 PM, and I will call our Lakeville City Council meeting to order Monday night, December 21st. We will start our meeting as tradition with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in a moment of silence. And if we can, let's join in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on our agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for us to hear from our residents and business owners. With questions, comments you might have on any matters that you would desire. The way the process works is we allow up to three minutes. If you are called upon, as you start your comment, please state your name and address clearly for the record. And if you are here for items further in the agenda, we have a public hearing. And we also have a conversation on the bids for the liquor store. I will ask for public comment at that time. If you'd like to wait, you're certainly welcome to make a comment at this time. Is there anyone this evening that, that has a citizen comment?
Mayor, real quickly, I apologize, but I think you skipped over roll call.
I was just gonna say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do roll call.
Volk.
Shar, please.
Volk. Volk.
We have our city clerk?
I don't, I don't see Shar on, so I will do it in her absence. Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Michelle Volk?
Here.
Joshua Lee?
Here.
Luke Hellier? Luke, I think you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. And Brian Wheeler?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I did such a great description of citizen comments. I don't think I probably need to repeat it again. Is there anyone that has a citizen comment this evening? And if you'll just please chime in, and if we have multiple people, then I'll call on one of you and the other one can follow. Mr. Miller, are you seeing anyone trying to step in?
I am not. And just if anybody is on the phone, you might need to hit star seven to unmute yourself, just in case you are on.
Okay. Well, we're not hearing anyone, so let's proceed with item number four. Mr. Miller, any additional agenda information?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to item number five. And this is a momentous meeting tonight, as we unfortunately are saying goodbye to council member Brian Wheeler. And normally, we would be obviously in person, and we, we would have a, we would have a plaque and a, and a recognition time. We're hopeful with council member Wheeler to do that at our first meeting in 2021. I believe it's on January 4th, and we will present him his plaque. At this time, I'd just like to see if council members, you have any comments in terms of recognizing Brian and his service for four years on the city council, and then we'll ask him if he has any comments. Michelle?
Thank you. So council member Wheeler, I wanted to say that it's been a privilege to serve with you in these last two years. And I think what I appreciate the most is that you're always so full of ideas. Something, you know, to help us brainstorm through different issues as we look at policies or ordinances, et cetera, and budget items. And I've always appreciated that you've come forth with some, you know, let's just use the old school, school term, out of the box thinking, and presenting an idea for us to banter around. So thank you so much for your last four years, and also thank you for everything that you've helped me and to be a better council member these last two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Joshua?
Brian, I just wanna say thank you for your service to council and to the city of Lakeville. I, two years is not enough time to work with someone. In a lot of ways, I feel like we were just getting into a groove. But, you know, one thing that, I'll second everything Michelle said, but I really appreciate your gut instinct in the way that you, you served the city. And you, you spoke from the heart and made those decisions from the heart. And so I just, I appreciate what you brought to council, and it was a privilege to work with you as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Luke?
Brian, I, I think I've said this to you before, and I say it to anybody that asks, that one thing that I mostly appreciated on, from you being on the council was your experience as a small business owner. I don't think anyone else on the council writes as many checks with the name on the front versus having your name on the back. And that perspective was so important on the last four years, and in particular this last year, to get your thoughts as we try to navigate through helping businesses like yours. And so I'm hopeful that you continue to, to share that insight with me, at least, as we try to work together as a community to navigate through this. But I'm grateful to have served with you in our term together when we came in. And I'm just thankful to, for all that you've provided to our council and to our city as well.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you. And I'll just add my comment. Brian, it's amazing how fast four years go. I remember when you just started, and I think, I guess I, I think it's probably fair to say that you've learned a lot, and that first year was a big learning curve, kind of finding your way. It's just your participation, your creative thinking, which has already been said. I, I appreciated how you processed things as you learned new information, like, for example, on liquor stores. And, and that you, you took in the new information and really took light of it, and thought things through, and weren't afraid to change your mind. I guess in the end, I would just say that, that your values, your love for this community, and as Luke said, the fact you're a small business owner, really brought a lot to the work that we've done the last four years. I valued and appreciated serving with you, and I do wish you well in your new endeavors. I'm sure your spare time will fill up quickly with all the things you're involved in. And take care and Godspeed. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Doug.
And would you like to make any comments?
Oh, definitely. You know, this was a huge honor for me, you know, starting even when I opened my small business, all the, the red tape I had to go through for, you know, things that I, mistakes I've made in earlier in my years. And, you know, to be able to, to gain the trust of a city of Lakeville and to, you know, represent our city the best I could was a huge honor for me. It'll be, you know, that, I tell people I'm a councilman, they're like, they just look at me like, really? And I'm like, yeah, you know, you know, especially people from Missouri that kind of know me from, from before, they're like, man, they, you know, I get emails from them and texts from them just saying how proud they were and how awesome they've watched to see what I've accomplished and what I'm doing, you know, at this stage in life. And it's been one of the biggest honors of my life so far, and I will definitely remain on that in the council chambers with my face there for a long time. But it was, it was a big honor, and I'm, I'm really grateful for the city of Lakeville. I've learned a ton from each and every person that I've gone with. I knew nothing about politicalness, you know, throwing my name in the hat four years ago and winning, and I didn't even know I won. That was, you know, that was huge. Justin, I have to give you kudos, like, you've, you've held my hand through a lot of things, and it's been a great honor working with you on a daily. Justin's had to hold my hand the whole way through, calling me, making sure I know what's going on. And he's been a great job. Doug, you've been a great mentor. Michelle, Josh, you've been awesome. Luke's like the classmate of mine. We came in together, so I've bounced things off him a ton. He's kind of political, I'm not, you know, so it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a good marriage. But I just wanna thank everybody throughout the city, and I'm always here to give my opinion. I'll never shy away from saying what I think. So I'm not out of it completely, so we'll see you all around, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Let's give him a round of applause. And Brian, I think you-
I wanted a standing ovation there.
Well, you'll get it on January-
On January, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll need to come back to get that. So, and, and I think, I think there's a, a good value here, or I, this is kind of where my heart is, is I'm, I, I really believe in citizen-run government, and I think our local, our local municipalities are places where our democracy really works. And I'm so grateful that you threw your hat in the arena, you know, Brian, and I think it's a true testament to that, you know, we all come from different places, and, but we can work together for the betterment of our city. And I'm, I'm really grateful for your service, as everyone as well has said. So thank you very much, and we'll see you on January 4th. Okay. We will move on to our, our consent agenda. These are matters we consider to be more routine in the nature of the business of the city. And Mr. Miller, anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor, council, a few items tonight. Item 6D is an annual declaration of polling places for the following year. By state law, we have to set that before the year. We are not recommending any changes at this time, although we all know that we might be looking at that again in the future, depending on how mail-in voting or absentee voting continues to take calls. We'll be looking at that. And then the next three items are all donations. Item 6F is a donation from the moments of Lakeville, and that's an amount of $5,000 to the police department. And then the restored thrift store has donated $2,500 to each, the police department and the fire department. And we just wanted to publicly thank them and recognize them for their donations. That is all for tonight, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience or any council members, any items you'd like further information on or have a question about? Hearing no one, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, there's, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think our city clerk is on. Shar, roll call, please.
Volk.
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item number seven, a public hearing to consider vacation of an easement in First Park, Lakeville, and Clemmer Second Edition for this County Road 70 improvements. And it looks like Mr. Johnson joined us, and I believe there's a staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Jim is gonna help me with a short slideshow presentation. Jim, if you'd start the first slide, please. Thank you. This is a public hearing tonight. It's very short and brief, but just a couple of minutes here. It's a, the request tonight is for the city council to consider vacating two easements, both in the same location. One is a public roadway easement for roadway purposes. The second is a drainage and utility easement. Next slide, please, Jim. Here's the location for perspective. You'll see County Road 70 running east and west. You'll see that boulevard there running to the northeast and the southwest. And you'll see the blue star representing where these two easements are located. And then I'll, I'll explain the next slide here, so you can still see the graphic. These two easements were dedicated several years ago with the Clemmer Second Edition final plat. And the intent of these two easements was to preserve an area where you could have future access to the undeveloped Metropolitan Airport Commission property. We worked closely knowing that County Road 70 would have some access restrictions, so we worked with the developer, the Dakota County, and MAC to establish these two easements. Subsequently, with the County Road 70 improvements this year, one of the things that we did do is construct a private road through the MAC property, and that road is completed, and therefore, the, the easements are no longer required for public use. Next slide, please, Jim. So here you'll see the red kind of in the middle of your screen is the location of the two eas, is the two easements. You'll see how it can kind of bisect the, the existing Dick Sanitation property. We were able to work with them and the adjacent business owners to relocate it to the south end of the property. It maximizes their ability to utilize their existing land. Also, also potentially coincides with some potential lease opportunities with MAC. And there you'll actually see that the Business Access Road was completed, providing access to Dick Sanitation, and then also Boise Cascade there on the east side, running through the MAC property. So before, before we get to the final, I just, I would want to take this opportunity to recognize our business owners. This is a project that has taken several years to get, move into construction, and it was with a lot, a great partnership with Boise, the existing landowner, Dick Sanitation, the county, the Metropolitan Airports Commission, in helping us to accomplish this kind of economic development success. So with that, the next step, Jim, next slide, please. The next step for the city council's consideration, it is a public hearing. And following the public hearing, the request to vacate the easements is before you this evening. And a reminder, it is a four-fifths vote of the city council required for that action. With that, I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Counsel, any questions at this time? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go to the audience. This is a public hearing. Is there any comments or questions? We follow the same rules as we do for citizen comments. And is there any comments or questions for, on this matter? Hearing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Shar, roll call, please.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Now, in terms of the matter at hand, is there any comments or questions? I would just like to add my thanks, and Mr. Johnson already mentioned this, to the business owners and to the Metropolitan Airports Commission, for everyone working together and coming together around making this happen along with the county. So I'm grateful that this is in front of us, and it's a, it's a good solution to a problem that we had. So thank you all very much. Is there any other comments or questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Move to approve a resolution vacating an easement for public roadway purposes and a public drainage utility easement for county-state highway, county-state aid Highway 70 improvements from Kenrick Avenue to Cedar Avenue, City Project 20-05.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to our city clerk. Shar, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item number eight, the Keokuk Liquor Store. And we're excited to see and share how this bid process went. And as we look at our fourth liquor store, and Mr. Cannon is here to, to provide a staff report on the bids and where we stand. Good evening, Alan.
Good evening. Thank you, council and mayor. If you remember back in 2014 is when we actually started this process, when we purchased the land on Keokuk Avenue for the potential construction of a future liquor store. About 18 months ago, we updated the market study to see if the Lakeville market was ready for a fourth store. And that study came back and indicated that we were. From that, we engaged Tushy Montgomery Architects to put together some design alternatives for different types of stores and layouts that would fit on the property. Through several council work sessions and meetings and liquor committee meetings, we settled on kind of a flagship-style store with a single level. It would be, it would provide the community with a greater opportunities for, and variety and selection of, of product. In addition to that, we were, we looked at the potential of also bringing in our events and holding tasting events and training within the, within the liquor store site. So that's the way that we started the bidding process, was we looking at the base store with an alternate for an event slash tasting room addition on the south side of the building. So the first step we did is we, after settling on the design, we hired Loffler Consulting to help us with the bidding process and with the construction management side of things. They, with the help of Tushy Montgomery, prepared the bid deal for the steel bids in November. Those came in and council approved steel bid with distinctive iron for that part of the development. Then in late November and early December, we developed with Loffler and Tushy Montgomery the final design and bid package for the remaining construction of the store. Those bids came in on December 14th. We received 134 bids for 20 different scopes of work that are required for the construction of the store. The list of the low bidders is in your, is in your packet tonight. The bid for the construction of the store, which was, which we call the base bid, came in at $4,126,954,000. That's $241 per square foot construction cost, and it's about $275,000 below our estimated budget costs. The bids came in with the alternate design that would include the tasting room event space. That bid came in at $4,690,000, which is about 194,000 below estimated budget costs, and is about, is at $235, $235 a square foot cost. The primary funding source for this project will be the sale of bonds and revenue from the Kenrick property, the sale of the Kenrick property we completed in 2017. The breakdown of those costs, of the overall cost of the project is in your council report for your review. At the beginning of the council report, you'll see that the staff is, has three motions set there for your consideration. The first motion would be to accept the bids for the base bid as well as the alternate. So that first motion, if you approve that motion, you'll be approving the construction of the main store and the event space. With that, if council doesn't wish to move forward with that portion, the second motion there is to, is for the construction of just the store alone. And then the third motion is, is for, it's to modify or it's a supplemental resolution for declaring that the city will, will be selling bonds for the, pay for the construction of the store. With me tonight, I've got representatives from Loffler, as well as from Tushy Montgomery Architects, and I'll leave it at that, and we'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Counsel, any comments, questions? I, I can't see Brian, so I don't know, Brian, if you have a comment or a question?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing it. I just wanna say thanks to staff and also to our consultants and the folks that, that, the entities that were involved in the bidding. I was very pleased to see the results of the bids. And I guess without any further questions, is there a motion? And I think we can combine, combine all three of these together, if that would be the inclination of the person making the motion.
And just to be clear, Mayor, it's actually, it's just two motions. You need to pick one of the first two, and then the second one.
Correct. Thank you for correcting me. That's correct. Michelle?
Mayor? So I'm gonna pick the first one. Move to accept base bids plus alternate and award construction contracts for the construction of the Keokuk Liquor Store, City Project 20-24, and amend the 2021 budget to include City Project 20-24. Andrea, am I allowed to do the second motion and two? Okay. And then I would also like to include in that motion to approve the supplemental resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Lakeville to reimburse certain expenditure proceeds.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Shar, roll call, please.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Now, since I am leaving the council, I would like to say thank you for that going so smoothly.
Yeah, you're, you're very welcome, Councilmember Wheeler. We have, we have had robust conversation about a fourth liquor store, have we not?
We have.
So we will move on to our next item, which is business grant program. And I believe we have Mr. Olson with us to consider. This is a follow-on to a conversation we had last week, and we asked staff to pull together some, an idea. And Mr. Olson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll give a brief presentation and then certainly stand for any questions. And I will also mention that Katie Bachmeyer is participating in the meeting, and she was instrumental in helping me put together the information that was included in your packet. At the December 14th work session, the council directed staff to prepare guidelines for a third round of small business grants for businesses impacted by Minnesota Executive Order 2099. And council recommended utilization of up to $400,000 from the city's general fund for this third round of grant funding. The businesses affected by this executive order include restaurants with dining areas, gyms, fitness clubs, instructional businesses, including dance, martial arts, swim schools, as well as entertainment businesses. What is before you and what was discussed at the council work session on the 14th was a proposed maximum grant amount of $5,000 to businesses directly impacted by this executive order. I will point out that the resolution also was amended to include the latest executive order that the governor signed last week that extended the, the closure of dining in restaurants and then allowed for partial reopening of the fitness gymnasiums and instructional classes. But we, we prepared this initially, and we're working on it, went to council at the work session on 14th, based on the- But we, we prepared this initially, and we're working on it with the council at the work session on fourteenth based on the, on the original executive order twenty ninety-nine, but that has since been modified. Back to the program that's proposed, be a five thousand dollar grant to all businesses that meet the criteria. We would propose a online application process similar to what we've done in the past. However, in the interest of, and this is consistent with the county program that was rolled out last week for restaurants with liquor licenses throughout Dakota County, and that is basically, the application is the extent of the information that needs to be submitted by the business owners or applicants. There would be no business financials required, and we wouldn't have a separate grant agreement, but rather the signature of the application becomes, in fact, the, the agreement for the grant. This, we anticipate would streamline the process and cut down on the time. I think time is of the essence, as the council has discussed in those last few meetings. We would, subject to council approval, we would be ready to open up the applications tomorrow, December twenty-second. Have application period that runs through December thirty-first. And we would be in a position to and working closely with Sherilyn Erickson and her staff and finance department, hopefully be ready to distribute and make grant payments, the latter part of the week of January fourth. We, we talked at length and just with all the year-end fiscal and financial things that are coming up this week and the holidays this week and next week, we just didn't think we could, we'd be able to get the, the grant payments out before month's end, but we, we are confident we could make those payments first week of January. The other thing that is different this round, and county has taken the same approach in their program, which by the way, rolled out late last week, their applications portal was open last week, and I, I know I've heard from at least one or two Lakeville restaurant owners that qualified because of also holding a liquor license that have, have been working on their applications. But it would not be subject to, or businesses wouldn't be ineligible because of applying for funds at any of the other programs. As you are also aware, the, the state legislature approved a, a program, which is not necessarily a grant program, but will be direct payments from the Department of Revenue for the businesses impacted by Executive Order twenty ninety-nine. And the amount of the payment is going to be based on the number of employees those businesses have. So we, we feel that we've come up with a streamlined and expeditious program and manner to, to get. And one of the, you know, this isn't going to solve all the problems and, but as, as the mayor can attest to, when, when we had our last EDC member, one of our small business owners that serves on the EDC that's infected by, impacted by this executive order is that, you know, after a while, a number of small levels of assistance, you know, have a cumulative effect and beneficial to the business. So this isn't going to solve all the problems, but we certainly think it, it would go help in, in, in getting businesses through this period and, and be able to, you know, withstand the shutdown and come out on the other end. So with that, I will, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, David. Council, any questions? Joshua.
Mr. Olson, thank you very much for expediting this process and making this happen in less, in about a week's time. I, my only question was related to how the three programs, state, county, and, and city interact with each other. You mentioned that the city grant would not make a business ineligible to receive county funds or vice versa. Is that true also with the state program as well? So could one business receive all three funds?
That's correct. It could.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Luke.
Thank you. Dave and Katie both, I just want to thank you for the work. I, I've said this privately, but I truly do mean it. I mean, I would imagine that on, you know, March eighteenth that morning of this year, you would have not find yourself putting together these programs time after time and being able to turn around and helping our business community so quickly. And so I'm so appreciative for you guys working overtime and your whole team and the rest of the city staff as well. And I mean, I think the council has asked all of you to do a lot this year, and so I'm thankful that we're able to try to help our business community as well. I think the key component for us to all just understand why this is so important is that there are, the state, as you mentioned, is, is giving grants to businesses that are impacted, but only that have seen a thirty percent loss in revenue this year. So we have some businesses that I talked to that may have seen a twenty percent loss, for instance, of fitness. And so they wouldn't qualify. So it's really important for us to help them because we're able to do that. And then the other, from the county perspective, that only supports establishments with liquor license. It doesn't do anything at this time to help fitness. I do know that the county board has talked about, once they have their eight point eight or eight point three million dollar allocation from the state, that they are indicating to help other businesses impacted directly or indirectly based on the closure. So this is really important for us to be able to do this, to continue to help. You know, it's a Band-Aid to get to the next month or whatever it is. So I think we've got enough money allocated based on the number of businesses I think we think exist. We should have more than enough with the four hundred thousand dollar allocation, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hellier. I do have two questions, but is there anyone else that has questions? At this time? I'm not hearing anyone. I have two questions. One is, I'm, I'm just curious, I guess, of the ineligibility, and I know we had this in our initial program for the corporate owned chains. And if that still really, still means, remains relevant in terms of our thinking. So that's the first question. And I guess I'd appreciate staff response on that. And then the second is, one of the, one of the types of businesses that was impacted by this latest executive order by the governor, which has not received any relief, is hotels with pools. And I've had some conversation with, with local hotels that have pools and their businesses all go into Wisconsin, and I'm not sure how many that is. I'm just guessing a half dozen or four or six or something of hotels in Lakeville that have pools, but I'm, I'm wondering if we should include them in the program. I know five thousand dollars isn't very much, but as you just said earlier, Mr. Olson, when it starts to add up. And, and I'm also hopeful that the county in their next round, as they receive funds from, from the state, they're in line to receive over eight million dollars, that they might consider this aspect of the hospitality business as well. We're, we've got some really, really low occupancy rates that I'm very concerned about. So I'd appreciate, maybe Dave, you could start with some comments, and then if other council members have comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You, you are correct on the first issue on the ineligibility criteria, including corporate owned chains. That is a carryover, and that was kind of a, not just Lakeville or Dakota County, but a lot of the jurisdictions that were doing local grant programs at the start of this included that. And so it, it did carry over. I, I did some quick review of the list of, of, and I'm looking primarily at the restaurants. There's probably somewhere between five and seven of the restaurants in Lakeville that would, at least to the best of my knowledge, are, are corporate owned. You know, a couple of them include Buffalo Wild Wings, Chipotle, Cracker Barrel, Hy-Vee, Market Grill, and Pizza Ranch are ones that I'm pretty certain would fall under that criteria. There's a couple of the others that, you know, like we discussed, and Subway, for example, a lot of times the local owner owns the, you know, purchases a franchise, and it's not corporate owned, but part of a, part of a franchise agreement. So as Justin and I discussed this earlier, quite honestly, that's a policy decision for council. I would, I would be comfortable either way. I, I will tell you in the discussion we did have internally, corporate owned chains have seen the same impact of the closures as, as the privately owned, independently owned restaurants have. So they've certainly been impacted. They have a, obviously, a, a, a larger parent organization, but they certainly have been impacted. And I will say, as far as I know, Dakota County is not making a distinction between corporate owned versus non-corporate owned chains for their grant to restaurants that, that, that hold liquor licenses. So I don't know if you want my response, if you want to take them one at a time, or if you want my, my response on the other issues as well.
Why don't we take them one at a time? I, I'd be, I mean, council thoughts on the matter associated with this particular ineligibility criteria?
I just, Luke, I just had a comment about the pools, if that's what you were talking about.
I guess I would like input on the, the corporate owned chains, if they should be eligible or not. I do know the county did not carry this forward. I do think they've been, they've been hurt. Yes.
I, you know, differentiating, differentiating the corporate things is, we have to remember, they're still employing people that work, that live in Lakeville. And, you know, maybe they'll make it, maybe they won't. If you look throughout the country, a lot of these corporations are closing down too and moving out of places. So, you know, I would have the, I would say that we should follow suit with our corporate entities too. We're talking, you know, four to six. But, you know, they gotta pay their employees too.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, Luke, Mayor, my response to that would be, I, I agree with Brian, and that I wouldn't want to be writing something that if we get in a situation where, you know, there's a corporation that owns ten subways, for instance, but they have an operation in our community, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to impact that.
Okay, I'm seeing Councilmember Lee's shaking his head yes as well.
I have a question as well. When, do we, did we say when they had to be opened by? They had to be open in two thousand nineteen, or they had to be open in two thousand twenty?
Councilmember Wheeler, the guidelines currently state that, you know, for the restaurant, the test is they had to have dining in service as of March one, twenty nine, twenty twenty.
Okay.
That's helpful. Feedback on that? Luke?
Just to your response on the hotels, my only concern is, are we opening the floodgates and missing other businesses? And at what point are we expanding beyond that? And I, I am totally with you, and if it's a situation where we can come back after we see what the counties are doing, you know, the state is going to do ten thousand per movie screen, and maybe, I, I don't know what they're going to do for hospitality. So I, I am, I feel their pain and know how tough it is. I mean, I stayed, you know, sixty-plus nights last year in hotels and maybe five this year, so I totally understand how that is probably going. But then do we, you know, start thinking about bowling alleys or like other businesses that are in the social realm, so to speak? And then I just think it'd be important to focus on, on the, the bowling alley, or excuse me, the restaurants, bars and fitness at this point.
Councilmember Volk.
So as far as the bowling alley, I assume that's considered entertainment. So they probably could apply for this already. And that's just an assumption. Mr. Olson can clarify that. As far as on differentiating between a hotel that has a pool and a hotel that doesn't, I don't understand how one of them versus the other has any less of business, when I would assume that both of them would have the same share of lost revenue. So, and I don't know how many more hotels that adds. But it's probably, Luke probably is, I guess what I want to say is that I agree with, with Councilmember Hellier in that we can discuss this again to see what gets missed. Because we were trying to pick up the slack from the state and see what else gets missed and see if we can put funds that way. And I think we could do it, still do it fast enough that it would happen in January, before January closed, the month end. So thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Michelle. I, my distinction to the pool closure was specifically focused on, on the governor's executive orders says that pools cannot be open. So that's where I drew kind of a, I guess that's the path I, I looked at, was something related directly to this executive order, just like the restaurants and the other businesses. David?
Mayor, members of the council, we did do some, have some internal discussion on this, and, and I will let the city and attorney Paler also comment on it, but it was our opinion that the, the pool is an accessory use to the hotel and not the principal use. The principal use of the hotel was not impacted by the executive order, so they were still renting rooms and, and, and operating during, during the shutdown when restaurants and bowling alleys and these other, you know, fitness places were closed. So I, I, I don't disagree that in some cases, business is, is driven by, you know, especially the hotels that have the, you know, water park type pools and then that type of thing. But I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Hellier, and I, I think in the county will be considering this type of business in their eight million dollar, you know, next round of, of funding. And, and we would have to go back and the earlier question you, you brought up about the, about the corporate change is an easy correction to the change to the guidelines and to the application. If we start to loop in hotels and other businesses that are kind of on, on a secondary basis impacted by this, that, that executive order, it will take some more wordsmithing and take more time, and I'll, I'll pause there and let Andrea add anything else.
Andrea, you're on mute.
There. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I would agree with Dave. We did have some discussion on this, and then you start making distinctions between any other businesses that might have that accessory closing that, but still has an impact on the business, whereas this policy seems geared specifically to businesses that were closed to the public during this specific time period. And I also agree that we might have some issues with trying to wordsmith it at this late date.
I, I appreciate the messiness of this. I was just thinking about it in the context, like I said, about the executive order, but I, I, I'm comfortable pushing this into the county, quite frankly, and I have communicated to our county commissioner, excuse me, communicated to our county commissioner, the need for, for them to, my desire for them to look at this. And I certainly, I appreciate the other comments as well. So with that, is there any other questions, or would there be a motion to, would there be a motion to approve this with the, it sounds like we're in agreement on removing the corporate store in eligibility? Joshua.
Do I have to state the amendment in this motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So move to adopt a resolution approving the third round small business emergency grant program to businesses impacted by Minnesota Executive Order twenty dash nine-nine and allocate four hundred thousand dollars of additional city funding, including an amendment, including corporate chain stores, restaurants.
Second.
Okay, there is a, there's a motion and a second. Are we comfortable with the wording of the motion? In terms of the amendment? Okay, nod, head nods, yes. Okay, great. Good job, Joshua. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Shar, roll call, please. Hearing none. Shaw roll call, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Thank you to staff for your good work on this. I know a short timeline. And this adds another thing as we go through the holidays, but I know that our businesses will be very grateful. So thank you so much for your work. We'll move on to, we'll move on to our next item. Which, which is city administrator performance evaluation summary. And I'm going to turn to our personnel committee and, and one of the members is council member Lee. And he has a comment regarding the evaluation and then we'll approve it.
Thank you, Mayor. So we prepared a statement regarding the administrator's performance evaluation. The city administrator's performance evaluation was completed by the mayor and city council. Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller's direct reports were also asked to complete a modified performance evaluation form. This modified 360 approach provided the mayor and city council with multiple viewpoints for Mr. Miller's review and provided a balanced picture of his performance. Many factors were reviewed, including his engagement, his understanding of department operations, his leadership, his presence in the community, and his communications with the council, the public and the employees. We find Mr. Miller's performance exceptional, especially his leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic and racial tensions this past year. The city council completed an annual performance evaluation for city administrator Justin Miller tonight at a special closed meeting. Per the city administrator's employment agreement, the city council will review compensation on an annual basis. The personnel committee recommends the council make a motion to approve a salary increase to $186,760 and provide an additional 40 hours of paid time off to be in a separate leave bank effective January 1, 2021. The paid time off would be accrued at a rate of 1.5 hours per pay period for 2021.
Thank you very much.
Smile, Justin. That's good.
Why don't we make the motion and second, then we can have further discussion? I can make the motion. And Brian seconded it, sounded like. So any further discussion comments, council?
Well, Mayor.
Luke?
Yeah, thank you. And I said this in the closed session and I, I just wanted to, it bears repeating. Justin, I'm, I'm very grateful for the work of you and then also your team and the entire city this year, as I kind of alluded to, talking about David and Katie. I mean, the council and the community has asked a lot of you guys this year, a real lot. And so I'm just so grateful that the team that you've put together over the last five plus years really rose the occasion in what is a difficult year and will continue to be a difficult year into 2021 as, as far as we can tell. And so thankful for you for that. And this is a recognition of, of your work and your service to our, our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Luke. I would add, I'm, I'm looking at your face, Joshua. Are you starting to say something?
Well, I read, I read the statement. I didn't want to go before anyone else.
Oh. You may go.
Okay, great. I, I mean, I, I don't think we can over emphasize the leadership and presence that Justin has had in his leadership this, this year. I started to hate the word unprecedented and how many times we've used that this year. But there's really not a better word to describe what kind of year 2020 has been. And something I also said in the closed session is that there's such a consistency in the performance evaluation from, from Justin's direct reports from council. And just generally the community and their interactions. And it's, it's quite a skill to be able to manage all the various constituents and stakeholders. And even when there are disagreements or you end a conversation that, that you don't agree with, still have that mutual respect and feeling of being heard. And so, you know, the, the raise has is, is part of our, our symbol of thanks and recognition. Knowing that this is also a salary cap, there's, there's no room for higher salary. And so that is, you know, for anyone listening, wondering about the, the additional pay time off, that, that is because of our limitations and want to recognize your work and, and how you exemplify the work of, of our whole city staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Volk?
So thank you. So for our public, I think what they don't really realize and appreciate, Justin, is how many hours you work for your salary? And so your job is pretty much 24/7. And to even say that you get a vacation, I'm not really sure that you are totally away from the city of Lakeville when you're technically supposed to be with your family on a, on a vacation. You're still in tune. You would, you know, and I realize we have people that work under you that are supposed to take over, but you are so conscientious that basically you're always working on behalf of the city. And I'm sure that there's many nights where you're dreaming about your work on behalf of the city. So thank you so much for your leadership this past year. And it just goes to show how good your leadership was before that, that, you know, that you were able to take this situation and this crisis and all of the people underneath you were able to, how do I want to say, rock and roll and keep the business of the city of Lakeville moving. And, and our constituents have been, have benefited from the fact that the city of Lakeville keeps moving forward. So thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Michelle. And I will just add my comment and I, I just want to think back a few months ago when, when we were very excited that Justin Miller won the James Miller award and recognition and affirmation from the League of Minnesota Cities. And that is no small feat. And, and having a third party take a look at his work through the eyes of peers in other cities and other elected officials is, is a huge statement, Justin, in terms of your performance and your success and how well you do here in the city of Lakeville. And, and I can attest to Michelle's comment that it is a 24/7 position because I know in terms of, I have the privilege as mayor to, to be involved in, in, in other conversations and sometimes things come up at different times of the day and your responsiveness has always been outstanding. And I just, I'm very grateful. It's my privilege to work with you. And I'm grateful for the entire team that you support and lead. And that supports our city with all the different kinds of things that you folks do. So thank you very much. And I fully support this recommendation. Would you like to say a few words, Justin?
I would. Thank you, Mayor and council. And thank you very much for all the kind words. You know, I mentioned it in the closed session and I won't use the word unprecedented, Joshua, but it was a very challenging year for, for all of us, right? Not just the council, not just the city, the staff, the residents, the businesses. There's a challenge here all around. And I am extremely proud, excuse me, of the, of the effort that the organization, the city of Lakeville put together. And that's totally due to the team from the department directors all the way down. They really all stepped up. They, they took the challenge. They moved forward. And we still completed a lot of good stuff this year, even during a pandemic. And I think you'll see that I've been putting together kind of a year in review document and the communications department's been working on a year interview video that you'll see. But the city, I mean, it was almost as if we didn't miss a beat in a lot of respects and, and that wasn't easy. So, and that was all due to the team behind me. So I thank you for the vote of confidence tonight and it's a privilege to work with all of you and for the city of Lakeville.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion or comments? If not, we'll call a question and turn to our city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Wheeler?
This is a five-year deal, right?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And thanks to the personnel committee for your work. And we will move on to item 11 on our agenda, which is our COVID-19 city operations update. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll be very brief. First, I'll start with some good news. Countywide, the numbers of COVID cases continues to go down, which is good. And Lakeville numbers are going down as well. In fact, we're no longer number one in the county for documented cases, which is a good thing not to be number one for. So we appreciate all of the residents taking the, the proper measures in that regard. City facilities still are remaining in a kind of a hybrid mode. City Hall is still open. Although we are still encouraging people to call or email with, if you own as a business. Most of our other facilities remain closed. Lakeville arenas will start to open again on January 4th. I believe that's the day for practices only, and that's consistent with, with the governor's orders. Otherwise, you can continue to contact city hall for all your business or any of the city departments that you might need.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Joshua?
Well, in, in respect to the residents and businesses that have been doing their part in this, I think we'd be remiss not to bring up the alibi bribery situation that's going on right now. I think all of us have received calls, emails, messages. And so I guess to just kind of, my question is, can we clarify for folks where we're at in any sort of legal proceedings and what the role of the city is in any of that, if any, going forward?
Mr. Miller, would you like to respond?
I certainly can. And I, I know our city attorney and police chief can step in as needed as well. So the state of Minnesota has issued a restraining order, a temporary restraining order, trying to, to enforce the executive order. There is a court hearing tomorrow. Tomorrow, Dakota County judge is hearing that at 10:00 AM and we hope to get some guidance from them on how they expect the state to enforce this issue. The state has also revoked their liquor license and that is pending a hearing before an administrative law judge as well. I have not confirmed the timing of that. And so I'm not prepared to necessarily say when that hearing is, but we are in a support mode with the state of Minnesota in terms of how they are going to enforce this order. And that, them and working with Dakota County as well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? I just want to add a comment. I am so grateful to the entire staff. It has been a year of, of needing to be agile and nimble and flexible. And that means impacts on people's families and different kinds of choices in terms of work schedules and wearing, wearing PPE and, and all kinds of things. And we've, we've been in this together. I'm grateful for, for everyone's hard work. And, and for the leadership, Justin, along this path. And as council member Hellier said, I mean, just because we're going into 2021, this isn't going away just like that. So we need to press on and continue through this and, and continue to do the work to support our community in all the ways that we have. And I'm so grateful for that. Thank you very much. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to items 12 and 13 unfinished and new business. Council, any things for discussion tonight? Hearing none? Announcements? Mr. Miller, any announcements?
Just a quick note, city hall and city facilities will be closed on Thursday and Friday of this week for the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day holiday. And then we will also be closed on New Year's Day next Friday as well. But as always, public safety, if you need anything, please dial 911 and that's the best way to get assistance.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, council members?
Mayor?
Yes?
Before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd, I'd like to say again how appreciative I am with everybody that I've met and worked with over the last four years in the city and the council members and the people of Lakeville. Just want to make sure that everybody knows how grateful I am for meeting them and learning all the aspects of how a city runs. It was a great four years and I appreciate all of you all. And I look forward to seeing you as a regular citizen.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of Monday, December 21st.
Okay. And before we get a second, I do just want to announce that our next regular council meeting will be next year on January 4th, 2021. And we will be back in the council chambers with a hybrid meeting. So you can still log in online. But we will also be in the council chambers. And with that, is there a second to motion to adjourn?
Second.
And Shaw roll call, please.
Wheeler? Wheeler? Anderson?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye. I thought maybe Wheeler dropped the mic after he made the motion.
That's exactly what I was thinking. Drop the mic routine. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. Happy New Year to everybody.
Merry Christmas. Good night.
Good night.
Logging off for the last time.
Thank you, Brian. We're gonna miss you.